Listen to the rules and procedures that we'll follow for tonight's meeting.
Good evening, and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Town of Babylon Zoning Board of Appeals. The following is the procedure that will be followed tonight. The matters will be called in the order they appear on the calendar, with adjourned matters being called at the end of the regularly scheduled matters. Matters cannot be heard prior to their published scheduled time. When your matter is called, please submit the affidavit of posting to the secretary and proceed to the podium and give your name and address. The chairperson will then swear you in and read into the record information we have from your application, comments from various town departments, and any correspondence received on your application. The chairperson will then ask you to make whatever presentation you wish to make to the board. After you have made your presentation, the board will ask whatever questions the board deems appropriate, and then we will ask for comments from the public. If you wish to speak for or against an application, we ask that you wait until you're acknowledged, come forward, give us your name and address, tell us where your property is in relation to the property that's in question tonight, and then please direct your comments to the board, not the applicant or the applicant's representative. We have to keep a record, and we cannot do that if there are people talking over each other or cross conversations. If someone has spoken for or against an application, and they have said exactly the same thing that you wish to say, it will have the same force and effect in the record if you give your name and address, are sworn in, and say that you join in those comments. If you have anything additional to say, please don't hesitate to do so, but keep in mind that you will be given only one opportunity to speak. After the public has spoken, the board may ask the applicant to come back to answer any questions that may have come up as a result of the public comment, or for the applicant to summarize. When the applicant comes back to answer any additional questions, if that happens, that does not start a second round of public comments. Once the matter has been heard, various things may occur. The board may decide the application immediately. It may reserve decision. If the board reserves decision, that does not mean the matter is approved or denied. It just means that the board needs more time to decide, may want to go out and look at the site again, or might want to review the documents and testimony further before making a decision. In either event, the applicant will receive the board's decision in writing shortly after the board makes its decision. If the application is approved, that does not mean that you can then go ahead and start construction or whatever it is that you requested from the board. You will have to wait for the building permit to be obtained from the building department before your go-ahead. On some occasions, the matter may be continued for another night. If it is continued, in most cases, it will be for the submission of documents, a new survey, new plans, or something of that nature. If that's the case, no one needs to come back on the new date. The documents will be submitted, and no further testimony will be taken. On rare occasions, a matter may be continued for future testimony. If that's the case, then people would have to come back to testify. If matters are adjourned at an open meeting on the scheduled date of hearing, no further notice need be given unless specifically required by the board on the date the adjournment is granted. Three rules that may affect your ability to proceed tonight. One, if the sign was not posted for 10 days, we cannot hold the hearing tonight. Two, if you commence this proceeding while you own the property, but no longer own the property, and you are here now to continue with the application, you will need either the written consent of the new owner or the new owner to be present for the hearing. This situation could come about if you sold your house or building, money was held in escrow at closing for a certificate of occupancy or permit, and you're here tonight to clear that up. Lastly, if your application is a commercial application, and it's other than a renewal, and there is more than one tenant in the building, then you need your landlord to be here. Is there any applicant that has any difficulty with those situations and would need an adjournment tonight?
Is there anyone who would need an adjournment? Please rise and join the board to pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and every justice for all.
Okay, before we begin tonight, there is one adjournment on our calendar. It's application 24253, property located in Lindenhurst, 873 Catskill Avenue. Is there anybody here on that application? That's being adjourned to February the 6th. First application tonight is application 24252 of Billy Martinez, property located in Deer Park.
Hello, how are you?
Okay, name and address for the record.
Okay, I'm Jocelyn Rodriguez. The property is 304 Nichols Road. My fiance is Billy Martinez.
And do you affirm to tell the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay. All right, for the record, we have a planning division memo dated January 2nd, 2025. Biomedical control memo dated January 3rd, 2025. Just that you should be aware that this property could be subject to a freshwater wetlands permit. Survey by Barry Farr dated September, July 18th, 2023. Tax map acting as an area map, and...
Chairman, there's four photographs and a site plan by Norman C. Locke dated August 23rd, 2023.
Okay, would you like to tell us about the application?
We are applying for, to put a portico in the front of the house.
Okay, so there was an extension on the front of the house already erected, right? Was there permits for that?
The layout of the house is the same. When we purchased the house, there were, I don't know, some issues, some rotting, what have you. So there was previously a portico, so we wanted to redo the portico, but we needed a permit for it. So we put in all the applications with our architect, and there were some delays on that because of the wetlands. We did go to the environmental unit, and we were cleared on that.
But there is an extension on the front of the house, right? There was...
Yeah, no. Yeah.
So was when you bought the house, was that extension there?
That I, yeah.
It was there?
I believe so. I mean, the house is the same in the front, the way that it was when we purchased it. What we did was we took off the siding. We, like, fixed the front of it, the wood. We replaced all of the wood.
When did you purchase?
Uh, two years ago.
And that was there, that extension on the front was there at that time?
The front of the house is the same, it's just...
You guys represented by counsel at the time? You didn't have a lawyer when you closed on the house?
I don't know, did, yeah? I'm sorry, I'm gonna have him come up here, 'cause he would know more about, like, the process than me. I'm sorry.
That's not a problem.
Yeah, I don't...
I just need, before anything, just need your name and address for the record.
It's on 304 Nichols Road, Deer Park. It's Billy Martinez. Okay, so we purchased the house...
Do you affirm to tell the truth?
Yes.
Okay, now I'll let you go.
Okay, so, we purchased the house. She don't know about construction, so it's a little bit different. I work for a company, so, you know, she's probably nervous.
That's fine.
So, it was originally like that. We didn't do no modification, just how you see it, that's how it was. Prior to us buying it, that's how it looked. You know what I mean? We didn't do no add-on, in other words.
So how did you know you needed a permit?
No, we went, we went to the, we started doing construction, demolition in the bathrooms. Then it was rotting. Then it had some burnt parts. So I went to the architect. Then the architect said, "You need to do new beams, new this, new that." And then from there, because I, technically, I know about it, so then that's how we got to the process of this. She wants the portico, 'cause she, she likes it how it looks. You know what I mean? And she likes it...
It's more for safety, like going in and out, groceries, just coming into your house. I would think that one would have a overhang, like just protection of snow, wind, rain, what have you.
So the, well, I guess the problem we're having with this is, you know, the, the front property line is now gonna be 10.3 feet, where 30 is, you know, the code.
Okay.
I mean, you were already short anyway, because of whatever was built there, or whoever built that there. I mean, the house actually, I guess, even in the survey that I'm looking at, it looks like it was very close to the front, front yard anyway.
Okay.
So, is there any way you could do anything with that portico to, to make it less intrusive into the front yard? Gonna make it smaller, or...
Not, you can see, it's the foundation, everything is... You mean the portico to...
The portico.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you can make it smaller.
Condense it a little bit?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I mean, we'd, you know, just looking for something here. I mean, if that other structure was there, okay.
I can show you even all pictures when I bought the house.
Maybe if you turn the steps to the left, to the drive, towards the driveway?
Okay.
Okay.
She wants, she just wants, I guess, yeah.
Come out, just so that when you, it's not pouring rain on you.
I understand.
Mm-hmm.
Let's see if I have a picture.
So instead of putting those steps forward, we could just come down to the side of the left?
To where the driveway is.
Where the driveway is.
You'd have to submit the plans, just showing us that before we could do anything with it, you know, what you're proposing.
If, I don't know what the dimensions are to the front, like, I can't, I can't, like, read them from here, and I don't know them offhand. But if the landing, let's say, wasn't three feet and was two feet, would that work?
No, technically, it's supposed to be four, four feet.
So wherever your columns are for that roof overhang, is the measurement that we go by?
Afterwards, okay.
By any chance, can you do not, you know, because I have to go back to the architect, he's gonna charge me more. So, is there any way to keep the same, how it looks, just make it smaller? Instead of turning to the side, 'cause now he's gonna charge me more to some, to do the whole, yeah, to draw it out again.
Submit the plans.
Yeah, I know he's gonna charge me more.
Can you reduce the overhang?
Yeah, reduce, yes, yes.
Okay.
So right now, it looks like the overhang is 10.3, but you have, you have a 12-foot measurement there. So it looks like you can maybe cut it back from around the stairs.
Yeah, whatever you guys tell me, as long as it's, you know, I don't have to redo the plans again. That's what I don't wanna do, you know?
Okay, so, yeah, we wanna reduce the overhang.
Yes, if you can reduce it, I don't have a problem.
Well, you would have to reduce it.
No, I know, but I mean, on the, actual, you know, what, so like that, I know what to do, you know?
Okay, perfect.
Cause I know, but...
Currently, it's at 16.8.
Yeah.
As is, it's at 16.8. Correct?
Yeah. Yeah. Hope you can cut back. What's the portico now? How far out is that coming from the house right now?
Right now, I believe...
What you're proposing, I'm saying.
What I'm proposing?
Proposing, how far out do you wanna come?
I want it, technically, it's supposed to be on four feet, right? Forty-eight, I mean, yeah, forty-eight, right? A landing. Yes or no, right? Okay, so, I was, I was asking, if I'm not mistaken, I don't remember no more, 'cause it's been a while. That was already, you know, a while, so I think I asked for, if not, don't quote me, I think it was five feet by six feet. It was something like that, yeah. Five feet out and six feet.
Cut that back a couple of feet.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I don't have the plans in front of me, so I can't really... And this is the old home, if you wanna see it. That's how it was.
The original, the one we purchased.
While, while we're talking, let's talk about the shed a little bit, too. So, you know, you're also asking for relief for the shed. That was there, I'm assuming, too?
Yeah, that was there, yeah.
Okay. Would you agree to a condition if it ever had to come down, because it was in disrepair, that you would put it in a legal location at that time?
It's, it's small enough, that, that's not a problem. I'm not, that won't cost me that much, but, you know, I can knock that down and just move it wherever you guys tell me to move it.
Only if it comes down.
Only if it comes down.
Okay, it comes down on its own.
Not right this second, but let's say, if you want, five years from now.
No problem.
You just put it in a conforming location.
No problem. Sounds good.
Keep that in mind, if, if that occurs, all right?
No problem.
I'm sorry, it looked like it was 5.3 that he was asking for.
So if you're looking for 5.3, I guess we were asking, can you cut that back to three and cut a couple of feet off of that front portico that you put up?
So you want three feet? Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
What front guard setback are you looking for, 15-foot front guard setback?
I'm just looking at what the portico is. I mean, right now, it's 18.1 to the house. There's, there is stairs there now, right? I mean, there's just stairs.
Yeah, but it's falling apart, like...
Yeah, no, but, I mean, there is, there's a set of stairs there now.
Yep, mm-hmm.
Okay, so that's, that's existing.
And right now, it's, I believe it's 48 or clo, it's about 42 right now, right there. It's 42 stepping out across, I think it's, that's the doors 36, so it's gonna be a 48. So it's a 48 by 40, right now, the stairs. So it's 48 Y, and sticking out, it's about, I'd say 40, easy.
13.3?
Yeah. All right, we're gonna, we're gonna close the hearing, we're gonna reserve decision. We are gonna discuss it at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
And we will get back to you on what we wanna try and get you to do with it, okay?
Yeah, definitely, no problem, thank you.
So this will be another day that you'll get...
No, 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 you won't have to come back.
Wait, oh, okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You've directed open, no plans. You don't have to, you can, you can leave. Unless, you know, you wanna stay and you have absolutely nothing to do, but...
Thank you, have a good night.
That was this guy's name, Ben? What's his name? Ben?
Yep, that's what I would say.
Next application is application 24248 of Michael Bin, property located in Deer Park. Name and, name and address for the record, please.
It's actually Michael Bin, 268 West Forest Street.
And do you affirm to tell the truth?
I do.
For the record, we have a planning division memo dated January 2nd, 2025. Biomedical control memo dated January 3rd, 2025. If approved, this application will not result in significant impact. Survey by Frank Ferentello dated August 16th, 2023. Tax map acting as an area map, and...
Chairman, there's four photographs.
Okay, would you like to tell us about the application?
Sure, I was redoing the siding and the new roof, and the builder kinda convinced me to extend it over the stairs, 'cause to protect from the rain. Did not realize I needed a permit for that, so we started work and stopped work. So it's unfinished, the, the roof. And I guess at the same time, the town noticed something on the, the front deck, which was existent to, in the house.
Okay, thank you. To Ms. McCullough.
Okay, so when did you start constructing the roof?
Uh, it was August of 2023, right? Twenty-three.
Okay, last year.
I know, it's a long time.
Two years.
Two years.
Jesus.
Yeah, I had to wait for architects and this...
All right, so, you see why this can kinda be a problem? It's really close to your neighbor's property.
Um, I mean, I have gutters and everything. It's, I went, we went out only to cover the stairs, and to protect, you know, the electric and the, the gas, the stairs and the door over there. That's as far out as we went.
So you will be putting gutters?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And the front portico was, you purchased the house that way, it was built that way?
Yes, there was a large slab. There is a large concrete slab in the front of the house that I covered with composite. I didn't extend it, I just covered it. Composite wood.
Okay.
I can show you a picture if needed, I have an old...
When did you purchase the house?
2009.
2009. We don't have that on record.
But if you'd like to see, I have this building inspector report with the photo on the front, that shows it.
Submit if you like.
That's actually my copy, I can make a copy, though, if needed.
Yeah.
So we want this come back to the garage. Okay. So is there any way that we can cut the front deck to be in line with the garage?
So, I don't know how I would do that, 'cause the stone, there's a concrete slab underneath it that extends the entire way. And if you did cut it to the garage, you'd leave about one foot of space, which wouldn't be pointless to have a deck there, or a porch.
It does protrude pretty far out.
Is that even on the other side?
No.
No?
I don't think so.
Can you go back to the front?
Oh, the house comes out. Window.
Bump out there.
Yeah.
So is it even with that? Is it even with that?
The pictures they submitted shows the overhang there, too, in the backyard.
Well, yeah, that's... Yeah. Yeah, that's true, I saw that when I drove by today. I mean, but even without this, that's... Is that an undersized lot already?
It's narrow.
Okay. All right, so we will definitely need gutters. I mean, the deck kinda looks like it's more in line with the bump out for the window there. Does it extend further than that window? Your front window?
Uh, does the deck extend, extend further than the front window?
Yeah, does it extend further out?
Oh, yeah, yeah, it comes out, wait, it, it comes out further than that. It's, I think about three or four feet.
Steps do, or the deck does?
There's, there's both. Extends past that front window. That's a flat, it's, it's a bow window, I mean, bay window, so it's very small.
No, this one over here.
To the right.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, no, it does not extend past the window.
You said no?
No. The, the window to the right of the house, no, it does not extend past that.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Yeah, that's, that's...
Just that side.
Rather bumped out, all right. On the side, but they're gonna... The back overhang, was that newly constructed as well, or was that purchased with the house?
Oh, that was purchased with the house, yeah.
That was purchased with the house? So the only addition is the side?
That's correct, the only addition is the side.
Okay, and we're gonna put gutters there. And if we do approve this application, do you agree that the front portico not being closed?
I do.
And the roof overhang not being closed?
I do, I agree.
The shed? I have no further questions, I wanna hold you go.
Any other questions from the board? Would anyone like to be heard on this application? For the record, there are none. We're gonna close the hearing, reserve decision. And we'll keep the record open.
Yeah, absolutely, can you just give me the, the information to send it to? Thank you. Do you need a copy of the whole book, or just the front?
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. The next application, oh, wait. The next application was adjourned. That was application 24253, if anybody came in late. That application, which is on Catskill Avenue in Lindenhurst, is being adjourned to February the 6th, 2025. Next application is application 24247 of V&amp;J Autobody, Inc., property located in Lindenhurst.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Nicole Blanda, I'm an attorney at Bizel, Blanda &amp; Visconti with offices at 535 Broad Hollow Road in Melville.
For the record, we have a planning division memo dated January 6th, 2025. Biomedical control memo dated January 3rd, 2025. If approved, this application will not result in significant impact. Suffolk County Planning Memo dated January 9th, 2025. Decision of local determination. Take no position for or against. A site plan by Daniel Falasco dated July 14th, 2015. Tax map acting as an area map, and...
Chairman, there's three photographs.
Okay, would you like to tell us about the application?
I'm here tonight on behalf of V&amp;J Autobody, seeking, I know technically we're not gonna call it a renewal, but seeking a special permit to conduct a public autobody repair shop and allow for the outside storage of cars as per the existing site plan. And this was last approved in 2021 for three years. Originally approved back in 2006, along with a parking variance that reduced from 22 spaces to 12 and allowed parking within the 10 feet of the front property line. This is Industry G. Again, it's been here for quite some time. The change in ownership was a result of a partner selling his shares to another partner. So V&amp;J Autobody is still running the same business. Everything is still status quo. Nothing has changed in terms of their business operation or anything like that. The board might recall, I was here about a month ago on a similar situation, where even in that situation, it was a new tenant, but same use. So we're here seeking to continue this use on this site. It's on Wellwood Avenue, I'm sure many of the board members have driven by it over the years. It's been there for, again, quite some time. There's no complaints. So we're basically just seeking to keep it as it is. And given that it is still V&amp;J Autobody and that the principal, it's really just the owner, one of the principals sold his shares to another partner, we were hoping that we wouldn't have to come back in a year, because since it has been an established business, maybe we could keep the three-year period, if that would be possible. And also, I was curious, the variance for the 10 feet within the front property line and the parking variance. I know on other special permits that I've had to renew over the years, the parking variance usually gets solidified at some point. So I don't know, I, I know we've been applying for it every time that we've come, but I, I don't think it's really necessary. I think it can be granted and kept, 'cause it's not a special permit, so it really doesn't require a durational time limit.
Yeah, just let me amend this to, just for a second, to read. It shouldn't say renewal of, it should be requesting a spec, special section permit, because it is special.
Special exception, yes.
Because technically, it's a new owner.
It's a new owner, yes.
You know what I mean? So that's, that's why it's asking that.
Same tenant.
Okay. Who's got the... For the record, Mr. Rigby.
See Fire Marshal, has Fire Marshal been there for inspection?
I don't see the, the memo attached, so I don't know if they didn't go out yet. Okay, okay, so I know you have to hold it then, right?
Yeah, we do.
Okay.
If you wanna reach out to the Fire Marshal, make an appointment for him, they go there and spend.
Okay.
And once it gets out, then we'll move the application other than that. Does your client agree to the CNRs?
Yes, those were filed back in 2006. So yes, those are, these are existing, and they run with the land. Yeah.
Any other questions from the board? Would anyone like to be heard on this application? For the record, there are none. So I'll make a motion to, uh... I'll make, I'll make a motion. We're gonna close in here, reserve the decision, and waiting for the Fire Marshal, so if you get that...
I'll reach out, I'll see if I can move them along.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you, have a good night.
You, too. The next application is application 24194 of Romeo and Jessica Bertolini, property located in West Babylon. Name and address for the record.
Sure, for the applicant, John Farrell with the firm of San Ward Braff Coshagnano. Our offices are at 1300 Veterans Memorial Highway, Suite 100, Hop Hog, New York.
Okay, for the record, we have a planning division memo dated November 20th, 2024. Biomedical control memo dated December 3rd, 2024. Proposal will not result in substantial adverse change in air quality or water quality. Proposal will not result in substantial adverse change in air quality or water quality. Tax map acting as an area map. Survey by La Sala Land Surveying dated April 19th, 2024. And?
Chairman, there's seven photographs on the site plan by Eugene F. Genron dated April 22nd, 2024.
Would you like to tell us about the application?
Uh, the subject property is located on the north side of 12th Street, 60 feet west of 15th Avenue. It's a 65 by 100 lot, 6,500 square feet. It's presently improved with a two-and-a-half-story, two-family dwelling, uh, which is a pre-existing non-conforming use. My client acquired the property a short time ago and started to, uh, make renovations to it, because the property had been neglected for many years. Uh, there were drug activity, there was an OD at the house. Uh, there, there were many, many issues with, with this property. Uh, his original plan was to, uh, to move in and occupy one of the units. And he basically converted it, what was an existing bedroom on the third, the attic space had been converted to a bedroom. Um, he wanted to finish that out as, as a master bedroom for that second unit, and he put in a bath. To do that, he elevated the, the height of the roof by about... Well, he didn't elevate the height, height of the roof. He put effectively a dormer on it. Uh, this house, very similar to a Cape Cod-style dwelling, uh, where it had a large, uh, second-floor space that had very narrow pitches. So what he did was, he raised it by about three feet on a portion of that, that roof to add the, um, to add the bathroom. So the application requires two variances. Uh, it's to increase, uh, the house from two-and-a-half stories to three stories and to reduce the rear yard setback from 40 feet to 12.5 feet. The rear yard setback's an existing condition. Uh, this property was, uh, this house was built in the 1920s. Uh, it was originally consisted of this house, and then there were, it was subdivided into six lots. So this lot, and then five additional lots. I'm gonna submit, uh, to the board, uh, some aerial, the aerial photos from 1947. And you can see that this is the only, uh, structure on the block. It's a little tough to see, but there's a black dot on the property right in the middle of the map. So the, the rear yard isn't, isn't changing. In, in terms of the two-and-a-half to three stories, I realize this isn't a common request. My client fully intends to sprinkle the third floor as required by New York State Building Code. And he's already worked on plans for that. But if you look at it, um, if you look at this house, the, what, what he did to it to, to create the living space on the third floor really didn't change much of the house. The house is essentially gonna look exactly the same. All you're really gonna have is that three-foot bump out in the roof, roof line, uh, to add that space. You can see it on the lower right-hand corner of that image that's in front of you right now. Um, I could hand up a highlighted version of that picture, so you can see, I highlighted what was actually changed, so... The house complies with height, um, the setbacks, all the setbacks are pre-existing. It's set way back from the street. It is really not a significant improvement, uh, that, that's noticeable. It's not a noticeable three-story. If you drive by this house on any day, you're not gonna say, "Oh, that's a three-story house." Um, the, I agree, it's not in, in character with the community, but I think the, the design and layout of the house is so unique that I don't think this type of construction could be matched, so I don't think you're necessarily setting a precedent. Uh, if the board has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Turn the hearing over to Mr. Shepherd.
How are you, sir?
Good, how are you?
Good. Um, you mentioned that originally the owner was intent on moving in.
Correct.
What are his intentions as of today?
Well, because of all the delays, he had to make other arrangements. He's going through a divorce and he has two young children, so he had to, uh, use another, uh, he got another dwelling or another place for it to live. So that's gonna be his residence for now. So the idea would be to rent it out, the, the, to, to rent out, it's a two, it's a legal two-family house. He would rent out both units. The third floor is not creating any additional units. It's just, it's just a bedroom and a bathroom. And it's not even a substantial bathroom at that. It, it's, it's a very modest-sized house, all things considered.
But it won't be owner-occupied, is my really...
It won't be owner-occupied at this point, no. It, with all the delays and, and everything else, it just didn't work out.
I have no further questions at this time, Mr. Chairman.
So... How do you get to that attic? Only through the second...
There's a staircase on the second floor. If you look at the, uh...
Existing.
Isn't, it's an existing staircase, yes.
So, so there's no way to get to that area from the outside?
No.
You can only get to it from the inside?
No, and we would agree to a covenant that you wouldn't, that we wouldn't provide access, exterior access to the second or third floor.
Any other questions from the board? Would anyone like to be heard on this application? Come on up. I'm sorry, name an address for the...
Uh, Charles Bonseigny, 235 15th Avenue, West Babylon, New York.
What would you like to tell the board?
Well... I prepared something. I'll read that first. My name is Charles Bonseigny. The back of my home at 235 15th Avenue, West Babylon, is approximately 20 feet from the building in question, which is non, non-owner-occupied. The construction that was performed without any consideration for the town of Babylon procedures and codes adversely affects my family. We have diminished sunlight exposure in our family room and now are subject to looking at a wall from our bay window. I have photos of the... Modified height, and it's way beyond three feet. I'll definitely...
If you'd like to submit those, we'll put them in compliance with the record. I have multiple angles.
Myself and my family feel that these actions have lessened the tranquility and value of our home. The town of Babylon states that anytime someone other than the owner of a home is the primary resident, a rental permit is needed. This is done to ensure that all homes are safe for others to live in and that the premises has complied, have complied with all applicable, applicable, applicable code requirements. The owner only concerned himself to increase his rental income by adding a third story and has knowingly ignored all building and rental codes and permits. This building is an eyesore to our community. I implore this board to deny this application and demand the owner to restore it back to its original dimensions as soon as possible. Allowing three stories for a non-conforming use would set a negative precedent for our commu, community. We have, um, one of two petitions signed by a number of neighbors. There's another petition, but the neighbor that has it wasn't aware of the time, because there was no sign-up until late afternoon yesterday about today's hearing. This building... It is quite unique. It's three stories. And it, it's, it's an eyesore to all of us. Everybody's complaining about it, and we all, we all have to adhere to certain rules and regulations. Starting this construction without any permits, anything at all, to give, give the neighbors at least a fair chance to speak their minds before you raise a roof level as high as he did. It totally blocks the whole side of my house, which is very, very close to his. I have a picture of the house from yesterday morning with no sign saying that tonight was the hearing. So there's a lot of people that aren't here tonight to voice their opinions.
The application was scheduled for November the 20th. At that time, we announced publicly that it was being adjourned to this date, so it was not necessary to put another sign up from the original sign. There was an original sign, original, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just...
All right. I, I, I actually asked the town, and they weren't sure if it, had to be posted or not. I'm not sure if that's...
If it's done in a public meeting and it's announced at a public meeting, it's not necessary to repost.
Okay. Okay.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, I, I gave you, I...
You have a petition you want to submit?
Yes, uh, one of two. The other neighbor has the rest of it.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard on this application? For the record, there are none. Yeah. So you, you do realize you need rental permits here no matter what?
I, we, my, my client realizes that. My client took... When my client acquired the property, there was an existing tenant in the property who'd been there for 16 years. So, uh, the, the tenant on the second floor, I think, passed away. Oh, all right. The tenant on the second floor passed away in the home, so that space was empty. Anyway, we will get all of the necessary permits, the rental permits. Um, that, that's not an issue. I would like, I have not seen the photo that was submitted by Mr. Bonseigny, but if it's a, a photo of the existing, uh, condition, the plan that's before the board tonight is actually a modification of that. We brought down, the, the dormer is gonna be brought down and set back further from that property line. It's gonna comply with the height. That's why we don't need a side yard setback on that, on that side of the house.
We'll let you take a look at them. We obviously can't give them to you.
Um, I could also submit the elevation, and you can see on the top-left corner here. This is all you're gonna see from the street, uh, in this picture, and... Yeah, so this is gonna be cut back to, um, I don't have the survey in front of me, but I think it's gonna be cut back by seven or eight feet, um, to what's shown on the plan there.
So it won't be flush against the side?
Right now, it's flush. If the board approves this application, the plans that are before you are gonna show that it, it's actually not flush any, it won't be flush anymore. It'll be recessed back to a complying setback. That's why we're not seeking that relief.
Name an address for the record.
Romeo Bertolini. Address is 3 Mill Road, Glenhead, New York.
Do you affirm to tell the truth?
I do, sir.
Okay.
Okay, um, the, um, the architect had redesigned, had designed it so that it was, I don't know the exact amount of feet away from the, where it currently is, but he made sure that there was plenty of feet from that fence line to where the, the structure was gonna be put now. In other words, where the wall was gonna start.
So you're gonna modify what is existing?
Yes, yes, so that we don't need a variance on that side. So, and then the other thing, too, is in, I'm sure he said, John said that, that we did not change the pitch on the house. The house, the house has the same pitch. The roof line is the same. The only thing we did was, uh, uh, pitch it a little bit. And as far as, if you look at the house and, and where it is relative to the neighbor's house that's here right now, on the corner, you can see the house is set all the way back. There is no shadow that comes from my house to his house.
Okay.
So is, I have one question. Is it still gonna go north to, or south to north? Is it still gonna go the whole distance of the house, or is it just for a bathroom?
It's going all the way, it's going, yeah.
Yes.
There's, there's a few feet that are, the, where the dormer started, there's probably a foot or two from the front of the house and the back of the house. But it, it, it might be more like 10, 12 feet from, from where the, the wall is to, to where the new wall is gonna be, where, where it's gonna come from, which you can see in the, uh, in, in the drawings.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I guess my only other question is, so why was this done without building permits, or did you mention that?
I, I, why everything, I don't think it was intentionally done that way, but I'll let Mr. Bertolini explain.
I, I wasn't intentionally trying to do something off-color or anything like that. I, I have multiple rental homes. They're all legit.
So then you know better.
Yeah, no, but I, I haven't done construction like this before. I've done where I changed the bathroom, but I've never changed the structure of the building. So I was advised by someone that was doing the work, that was an architect, that he said, "You know what? If you go to the town, you, you really don't have to do it." I relied on somebody's, uh, recommendation, which was a poor judgment. As you can see, I bought the house in January. It's now January. I, I mean, it's, you know, the house has been, half the house is empty. I spent a fortune trying to fix it. This guy stopped the, caused me to stop the construction. The town wouldn't let me finish the siding. Right now, there's no siding on the house, which is ridiculous. I was lucky I was able to finish the roof, which would have destroyed the house had they not let me finish the roof. So right now, the house, as of April, has no siding.
I think, look, he normally, I think this started out as a project, from my conversation with the client, my client, started as a project to do interior alterations, realizing he had this pre, finished bedroom upstairs. You know, he was looking to keep use of that and add a bed, a bathroom up there, because he intended to use it for his own personal use. The advice he got from his architect was, "You're not changing the, the, the height. You can, you can do it." It was a, it was a mistake on his part, no doubt. But I, I think this board has seen, you know, many times where people come to you with applications for relief, where they, they've built stuff without permits and, and, you know, it's not, I don't wanna tell you what your job or mandate is, but it's not really to be punitive. It's to evaluate the situation and see if it, it, it can be granted a variance.
I, I don't, I don't think the question was to be punitive. I just, I think it was a question that needed to be asked.
Yeah, no, absolutely. No, I agree with that. I agree with that. But I think some of, I think, you know, some of the testimony received from the neighbors was, you know, he shouldn't be allowed to do anything because he did it without permits. And, and I don't think that's the way this board has ever operated.
I have a question.
Yes.
Did you have a CO for the, the bedroom upstairs, for the third bedroom?
No, we, we didn't finish the work, sir. We...
We don't know what was included in the, on the, in the attic space. All we have in terms of COs is we have a letter, a pre-existing non-conforming use board determination, saying that the house predated the zoning code and it was a legal two-family. It, it didn't have a breakdown of the, the square footage, the space, or what the rooms were.
And there isn't any bathroom there. It's, all we do is, you know, pitch the, pitch the roof. It's raw. There's nothing up there. Yeah, it's, it's not, it's not done.
Okay. All right. We'll close the hearing. We're gonna reserve decision. You get the decision in the mail. Thanks for coming. Thanks for coming down. We're going to take everything into consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I can't say anything else, right?
Only one chance. Next one is application 24207 of Five Star Auto Body Name and address for the record?
Kelly Bennett, 1257 Udall Road, Bay Shore, New York, 11706.
You're sure?
I am sure.
You affirm to tell the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, are you going to speak?
Hi, I'm Teresa DeAngelis. My address is 103 Court, West Side of New York, 11795.
You both affirm to tell the truth?
Yes.
Okay. For the record, we have a planning division memo dated November 7, 2024. Biomedical control memo dated November 8, 2024. If approved, this application will not result in significant impact. A fire marshal's report dated November 14, 2024. There are no violations. Tax map acting as an area map. And a survey by somebody. Jack Allison Hall, last dated October 19, 2010. Would you like to tell us about the application?
And Mr. Chairman, there's nine photographs. And a site plan by Jan Design Services dated June 24, 2024.
Okay, now, what would you like to tell us about the application?
We're basically here tonight seeking the renewal for our outdoor storage request of the 15 vehicles and one tow truck. We were, you know, we're kind of regulars at this point before the board for Five Star Auto. So we've been getting these approvals since 2018. So we were initially granted one year and had five parking spaces for outdoor storage and one tow truck. And we increased that. So that previously approved site plan was approved then for a two-year period. Within this timeframe, Five Star Auto actually purchased the building, which is Teresa DeAngelis. So similar to Ms. Blonda's case earlier, the tenant now owns the building. So that is the absolute only change. We have the recorded deed. The business is going to be operating exactly the same. And basically, that's all we're seeking. The building is CO'd for public garage. So our only request is the outdoor storage. From Mr. and Mrs. DeAngelis' request, they would love to ask the board for a five-year period, being that, you know, they have no intention of changing the site. Our outdoor storage is maxed out. If anything did change where they proposed any type of difference at this site, it would most likely bring us back to this board. So other than that, fire marshal report was good and everything is status quo.
Okay, thank you. Turn it here. Mr. Shepherd?
How are you?
Very good, thank you.
Are you going to be applying for a towing license?
You have it.
You're going to be renewing it?
Yes.
Sort of...
If it has to, yes.
Yeah, well, you got, yeah, it's only good, it's only good for two years, but...
Do you know when it expires? Yeah.
Okay. Just checking, just wanted to know if... I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions from the board?
Subtle, Mr. Chairman. At the time of the initial hearing, you guys were 11 months late?
Yes.
Are you going to be?
No, well, you know, and this was also, I do take responsibility for this because when we were working on the paperwork for this renewal, the prior owner is Mr. Manfree, it was J&amp;T Manfree. He's been living in Illinois. I knew that Teresa and Gary had intention of making the purchase. So as you see in our paperwork, I did prepare this. We have owner's endorsements and then a closing took place. And we did have issues then providing the recorded deed. It kept getting kicked back from Suffolk County. So we were actually pretty well-prepared, actually, this time. But I wanted to do it so it was a clean application from when they purchased the building.
Also, I don't know if anybody has ever seen this building before we went into it. It was horrendous. We did a tremendous amount of work. Even the fire marshal complimented on what it looks like now.
It does look nice.
Thank you. We try to keep...
Yeah.
I can make them repeat, please.
So we do, we do not anticipate, you know, being late.
Gotcha, thank you.
So for the record, we would then amend this to say requesting outdoor storage, if it's not a renewal, to new property owner. The GTG, GT...
G T D.
Owner, right?
Yeah, G T D, yes. That's what they purchased the building under.
So we need to amend the...
Well, me to amend it.
Requesting outdoor storage of 15. Instead of renewal.
Instead of renewal. Okay.
You want me to make a motion, Mr. Chairman? I'll make a motion to change, amend the variance for requesting of outdoor storage of 15 vehicles and one tow truck as per site plan.
Second.
All in favor? Would anyone like to... Any other questions from the board? Would anyone like to be heard on this application? For the record, there are none.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve application 24-207 for a period of three years.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good luck. Next application's, application 24231 of Auto Pro Automotive Services, property located in Deer Park. Name and address for the record, please?
My name is Robert Rinaldi. My address is 29 Ramsey Road, Comac, New York. And I represent Auto Pro Automotive Services. I'm the owner, president. I'd like to say a Happy New Year to the members of the board. Happy and healthy.
I'll say it to you. For the record, we have a planning division memo dated December 6, 2024. Biomedical control memo dated December 10, 2024. If approved, this application will not result in significant impact. Fire marshal's report dated December 12, 2024 has a valid permit. A survey by Frank Ward, undated. Tax map acting as an area map and...
Chairman, there's six photographs.
Okay, would you like to tell us about the application?
Well, excuse me, this is a renewal of a prior approval for Auto Repair Shop in this location. And we want to renew it so we can continue business, you know, at that location. Just about me, I've been in business in Babylon since 1973 in the auto repair business, 10 years on Deer Park Avenue, and then built a special-use building at 18 Brandywine Drive in 1983, which I had for another 40 years. So I'm proven in the area and I want to continue to be in the area. And my last approval at 18 Brandywine was for three years.
There was a lapse in it from '22?
I could say it was three back operations and three knee operations and also just my lack of not applying.
We grant this application? Are you going to apply on time?
Yes, sir. I would request a three-year approval if that's possible. I mean, 51 years in the area, I think that's pretty good record.
Unfortunately, we're late, but... Any other questions from the board? Yep, so they're showing flag banners outside the building?
At times, I do fly the American flag.
The American flag, but what about other banners?
Sometimes we do switch. But if that's, if that's not proper, we just won't do it.
Yeah, it's not proper, so...
Okay.
We need to file for a permit to do that.
Yeah, you need a sign permit if you're going to do that. All right. Would anyone like to be heard on this application? For the record, there are none.
Good, good, good.
I'll make a motion to approve application 24231 for a period of two years. Second. All in favor?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I say thank you to the board.
Good luck.
Okay.
Come back on time.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Just, it happens. That concludes, Mickey.
That concludes.